The Select Board meeting for January 29th. And announcements, I believe, Select Person Hamilton has an announcement.
Yes, and I will try to be brief. As many of you know, I recently went to Israel on a trek for municipal leaders from across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I was joined by leaders from the city of Boston, Melrose, Quincy, East Hampton, Springfield, and the town of Randall. Although it has been a few weeks, I needed that time to reflect on what I saw and learned while over there. I want to share some of my first thoughts with you tonight. We started our time in Jerusalem in rainy, cold weather. We walked all over the city and had the opportunity to visit the Western Wall, which was a truly moving experience. We learned about all the holy sites, not just the Jewish ones, as we navigated the city. We visited the security wall outside Bethlehem and heard from its creator about its strengths and its weaknesses. We visited the West Bank, including an NGO called Roots, dedicated to fostering a grassroots movement of understanding nonviolence and transformation among Israeli and Palestinian neighbors. We visited an integrated school called Hand in Hand that is bringing children of all faiths together to learn and foster a different sense of community. We met with Parks and Recreation staff from Nazareth to learn their budget process and lack of public open space. Some things don't change no matter where you are. There were a number of themes we encountered, but two in particular I would like to focus on. The first is intentionality, and the second is segregation. I was incredibly struck by how deeply institutional the segregation runs in a place the size of New Jersey. Public schools are segregated based on religious observance. In order for anyone to meet someone who differs from themselves, one must intentionally make that effort. There are many differences to overcome: culture, language, religion, time zones when it's daylight savings, governance, and physical space. The main takeaway that I and many of my colleagues on the trip took away is that it's complicated, far more complicated than you could imagine. I am committed to learning more about this place and all of the people who call it home. I am inspired by the work of so many organizations who are trying to be intentional about bringing people together, whether it be on farmland, in schools, at the Knesset, or through parks and recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds a very worthwhile trip.
It was.
Yeah. So I understand there was an event on Sunday?
Yes, we received a gift of a new statue, which sits in the lobby of the Town Hall from an artist that I think was underappreciated during his life in Brookline, John Wilson, an African-American artist who's nationally renowned. He's got a piece of art in the Capitol, and we have a, not a bust, a statue, a bronze head, which is a study of a larger work which sits in Buffalo, New York. So it's a striking piece of art, and we had a packed house on Sunday to receive that bronze head formally, and we heard from John Wilson's widow and other community leaders. And I thoroughly enjoyed it, and would encourage people to go and visit the bronze head, the sculpture, as they come and go from Town Hall.
And we heard from Ben Franco, a community leader, who made a very good speech, sort of talking about the statue and how to view it and how to learn from it. So that was, I think that he needs to be recognized for that. The thing that I was interested about what Heather said, intentionality, was a word that I thought Patricia Wynn, in my interview during the Martin Luther King event, invented. And she uses it basically in the same way in the American context, in that she was talking about how to foster integration, and you know, the context she was on here in the U.S., racial integration in housing. It takes not just letting the market, you know, do its thing, but intentionality, as she put it, in terms of reaching out in various ways, and she mentioned a few examples. So it's interesting that you mentioned that in your context.
And I was actually paraphrasing someone who had used it, that we visited at Roots, the organization that seeks to bring neighbors that really don't interact together to foster a dialogue.
That's a good word, within our vocabulary.
Maybe the word of the year for 2019.
Yeah. I'll also mention, just for public's information, we did receive a communication from the National Park Service, which we have referred to council regarding the Baldwin site. So let's move on. Question of approving the minutes for January 22nd?
I had some edits, which I have given to Kate.
I have a couple little things. Oh, yeah. Any public comment? I see none? Okay, sorry, I skipped it. All those in favor of the minutes for January 22nd, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have a question of accepting a gift in the amount of $1,000 from the Brooksmith in connection with the poet laureate program.
Good evening, Justin Castenover-Davis, Assistant Town Administrator, here to get approval from the Select Board to accept the donation of $1,000 from Brookline Brooksmith, which goes in connection with the poet laureate's stipend.
Right. Mr. Zestling is our poet laureate, and he had a role at the MLK event.
At the MLK event, yes. He read a poem by Gwendolyn Brooks. He read it very well, although not as well as Gwendolyn Brooks read it, and her reading is actually online. But he did an incredible job, and, you know, it sort of illustrated the importance of this program. So I think that Brooksmith should be thanked.
Right.
And commended.
Over.
Yeah. I'll also just mention, for not the old timers, Mr. Zestling is a former selectman.
Oh, that's right.
And we were called selectmen back then.
Right.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the gift in the amount of $1,000 from the Brooksmith in connection with the poet laureate program. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Masak, we have two contract amendments with Jonathan Levy Architects, Jonathan Levy Associates. One is for the Baldwin School Project for 1.179,280 million, and the other is for the Driscoll Project, same amount. This is for schematic design. Mr. Masak?
This is just a continuation of the designs for both projects. Schematic design will inform the Maytown meeting when we put together the total project budget for both projects.
Right. Okay.
By the way, I believe the name of the firm is Jonathan Levy Architects.
Okay. Kate, please note that for the minutes.
Good catch.
So I'll move the motions separately. So first is the approval of the contract amendment, $1,179,280 with Jonathan Levy Architects for schematic design services related to the Baldwin School Project. All those in favor, Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
Selectman, God, I'm going backwards. Chair votes aye. And I'll also move that we approve the contract amendment in the amount of 1.179,280 million with Jonathan Levy Architects for schematic design services in connection with the Driscoll School. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And you're up for the fire station. So the next item is approving a contract for $135,000 with Thompson Waterproofing Inc. in connection with exterior wall repairs for fire station number seven. Mr. Masak?
Yes, this is a continuing appropriation for both. This is for just masonry repair, and the next contract I bring next week will be for the roof repair over at the golf course. We've got seven bids. We bid it early, and we always get favorable bids because the town of Brookline is usually the first one out, out of most of the communities in the Commonwealth. So we get good interest, good favorable bids, and that saves us money.
Any questions? Therefore, I'll move that we approve this contract in the amount of $135,000 with Thompson Waterproofing Inc. in connection with exterior wall repairs for fire station seven. Excuse me. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Moving on to our main calendar, we have a question of authorizing two vacancies in the Recreation Department, Recreation Leaders one and two. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Zinski, and I'm Leigh Jackson, the Acting Director of Recreation. I'm here tonight to request your authorization to hire for replacement for our Rec Leader Two position. It's our sports management position, and previous person left pursue a passion for coaching athletics.
Okay.
Well, it's good that we've helped this person. It's Ellen, a woman?
Ally, Ally LeBlanc.
Helped her to develop her skills to move hopefully up into her passion.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But we still need to replace her.
We do. We've helped her refine her skills and learn exactly what she wants to do for her career, and she had a great time here and only said wonderful things about the town of Brookline and her time at recreation.
Great.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? I'll move that we authorize the two vacancies, the filling of the two vacancies in the Recreation Department. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have, the next item is adoption of an investment policy. Ms. Franconi?
Good evening, Gina Franconi from the Finance Department. Before you is an investment policy which follows the GFOA best practices. It complies with all state laws, and it has been reviewed by two of the investment firms that we use currently. There really are three pillars to municipal finance, that is safety, liquidity, and yield. Also within the policy is a section on social responsibility. So when possible, it is encouraged that we invest in entities that promote environmental sustainability, community development, diversity, fair labor practices, and transparency and accountability. Companies to avoid include those involved in production and distribution of tobacco, fossil fuels, nuclear power, weapons, firearms, gambling, pornography, human rights abuse, and discrimination. This policy, although it has not been formally adopted, has been in use since I was appointed Finance Director. May I answer any questions?
Sure.
Yeah, I think under social responsibility, the last sentence needs a little grammatical fixing.
Sure.
So we want to avoid companies involved in various things, but not companies that are not, let's see. Human rights abuse and discrimination is sort of a separate concept, so I think it's companies that engage in human rights abuse and discrimination.
Okay.
Because they're not producing that, they're engaging in it.
On page four, there's a statement, "The town requires full collateralization of demand deposits, including checking, CDs, and money markets," which sounds good. But how does that work if we have money in the bank that's above the FDIC and DFM or DIFM limits? And we do have some.
Yes, we do have some, and so then the bank is required to go out and get additional collateralization for us, and so we have a signed contract with one of the banks. I have since being here moved funds around so that we have lowered the town's risk.
Is there an upper limit to the amount of collateralization that we could use? And in some states there are, beyond the FDIC amount.
Yeah, there are some banks. I always bank everything within Massachusetts. It's the preferred method. But I have diversified throughout the community using the local banks here in Brookline.
I guess my question is, is there a maximum amount, like $2 million, beyond which you cannot collateralize your deposit?
Well, we can't have more than 60% of what a bank's capital assets are within one bank, that's state law. So we are managing about, on average, about $100 million, and so I won't exceed that.
Could I make another suggestion under that category of C, social responsibility? And I think Select Person Green pointed out the issue with the human rights abuse and discrimination phrase, but I think that the whole thing actually is not quite a sentence. I mean, I think people understand it, but it might be better if we said, "The town will avoid companies involved in," et cetera, et cetera.
Sure.
In other words, not a passive sentence, not a, I think that's the problem you were referring to.
Okay. So do we want to vote this conditioned on that change in that sentence?
Happy to.
And don't come back.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just note that this is a very conservative policy, and I think appropriately so, given we are dealing with the public sector tax dollars, hard-earned tax dollars, and I think it's our fiduciary duty to be conservative in the investment, the temporary investment, really, of these monies that we're holding for, in anticipation of spending for the most part. So it's not like we're, a lot of these monies are investment monies. We have separate policies for pension and OPEB's and other investment accounts. But just the nature of what we do and the way cash flow occurs and the kinds of reserves that we need to have to be prudent, and we'll hear about some of those in the next item, requires that there's a fair amount of money in the bank, upwards of $100 million, depending. So I'll vote, I'll move that we adopt the investment policy as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item is the audit report. Select Person Green is going to kick this off.
Bernard Green, Select Board Member and Chair of the Town's Audit Committee. Traditionally, this report has been given from the podium, although it's not necessary. But when I came on board, Nancy Daley did it this way. I'm just going to continue that tradition. It gets me up out of my chair. So I'm presenting the report of the Audit Committee on the Audit Prepared for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2018. The audit was prepared by the Town's auditing firm, Powers &amp; Sullivan, represented here by Craig Peacock. And Powers &amp; Sullivan is based in Wakefield, Massachusetts, and performs audits for many municipalities, and has performed our audit for many years. I don't know how many, but it's been a while. Twelve or so, okay. So, and we get a good product from them, so it means that they've learned something about the town over those 12 years. To get to the bottom line of the audit, Powers &amp; Sullivan gave the town an unmodified opinion. That used to be called a clean opinion, and a few other things over the years, but these days it's called an unmodified opinion, meaning that there is no need to modify any of the findings of the town's financial statements. It's the highest level of opinion, and the exact wording of the opinion is found at page 15 of the Report on Examination of Basic Financial Statements, which I believe Board Members have in their packet. "The objective of a fiscal year audit is to obtain independent assurance that the town's year-end financial statements that are prepared by the town are presented fairly and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which means that they are prepared in such a manner that Select Board Members and others reviewing the financial statements can do so using a common language and allows comparisons of one year to the next, and also comparisons of Brookline's operations with those of other municipalities. Our Town Bylaw, Section 3.5, directs the Audit Committee to review the financial statements and advise the Select Board on the audit's findings and the town's financial condition and its financial management systems and controls. The Audit Committee is also responsible for reporting to Town Meeting if that's necessary or appropriate. The audited financial statements are part of a broader federally mandated so-called single audit that includes the Report on Examination of Basic Financial Statements and the Report on Federal Award Programs, as also in your packet. That is required because of the amount of federal funds received by the town, which I believe is $750,000. That requires a single audit report. In addition, the audit includes a third document, the Management Letter, that identifies some areas where the town could strengthen internal controls and operating efficiency." And that's the third item in your packet there. The single audit, that is a Report on Examination of Basic Financial Statements and Report on Federal Award Programs, together with the Management Letter, are important pieces of information for this Select Board, as well as taxpayers, credit rating agencies, and purchasers of our bonds. Most importantly, the information helps this Board, the Advisory Committee, and Town Meeting to effectively perform their oversight functions. The success of an audit and its usefulness to its users depends on the ability and willingness of town staff to provide information to the auditors in a timely and useful manner, and to respond quickly and adequately and accurately to questions posed by the auditors. Information on the ability and willingness of town staff to work with the auditors is particularly relevant to this Board's responsibilities and would be highlighted in the audit report if that actually were a problem. The Audit Committee held its meeting on Wednesday, November 28th, last year. The members are me, appointed by the Select Board, Susan Wolf Dickoff, appointed by the School Committee, Leigh Selwyn, appointed by the Advisory Committee, and James Littleton, Greg Grubstein, and Peter Finnerty, appointed by the moderator. And non-voting staff members of the Committee are Melissa Goff, the Town Administrator's designee this year, Jennifer N'Coni, Brookline's Finance Director and Treasurer, Michael DePietro, Brookline Controller, and Mary Ellen Dunn, of the Brookline School Department. The Audit Committee met together with the staff members to receive the draft report and ask questions of the auditors, fully understand and suggest any necessary edits. We then excused staff and asked the auditors to present any other information that the Audit Committee should know, and to give us their frank assessment of the functioning of town staff, the reliability of the financial statements, and whether there were any concerns that needed to be conveyed to the Audit Committee and the Select Board confidentially. So, quick summary of the audit. The opinion, as I said, we received an unmodified opinion. We should be very happy about that. Of course, it'd be really a shock if we didn't receive an unmodified opinion, in my opinion. The language of the opinion is found at the bottom of page 15 of the Report on Examination of Basic Financial Statements, which is the main document in your pile there, the thickest one. That's not a guarantee that there are no misstatements of a material or non-material nature. Rather, it's the auditor's judgment that, based on relevant reviews, the opinion can be given. Those reviews include interviews of relevant officials, examinations of ledgers and other books of selected town departments, and testing selected accounts to make sure that there is backup documentation for expenditures and receipts, and that financial information is properly recorded. I think that sums it up. Well, okay, okay. The auditor also determined that their review of the internal controls of the town did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that they considered to be material weaknesses. Those are words of art in the auditing profession, and they're defined in the internal, or the audit reports there. I'm sorry, in the Report on Federal Awards Program, those words are defined. "Deficiencies in internal controls would include lack of fraud prevention procedures or failures to comply with provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements." The specific language of the auditor with respect to the lack of any deficiencies in internal control is found at page one of the Report on Federal Award Programs. The importance of this opinion, in addition to being required by federal agencies, is that it is used to help identify areas to focus on in the financial audit by the auditors. Because they did not find any deficiencies in internal control that were considered to be material weaknesses, the auditors were able to say that the internal controls appeared to be sufficient in their design to detect and correct any misstatements. There were minor instances of noncompliance this year and last year that were detected by the auditors and are described on pages nine through 11 of the Report on Federal Award Programs. Craig Peacock may elaborate on those findings which relate to the School Department's procedures. There were also matters that the auditors identified that presented opportunities for strengthening internal controls, which are described on pages two through nine of the Management Letter. And again, Craig Peacock may elaborate on those findings which relate to the Adult Education and Continuing Education Revolving Fund that was raised at last fall's Town Meeting, and the High Schools Accrued Scholar Program. The auditors also made recommendations for what they call a framework for assessing and improving cybersecurity, which is a hot issue throughout the world, and which last year the Audit Committee raised as an issue for the auditors to, you know, give some thought to and suggestions as to how we should address some of these issues, those issues. Again, Craig Peacock will want to, may want to describe that in some greater detail. So the Audit Committee voted unanimously to accept the audit on November 28th with a few minor edits, and we recommend that the Select Board also vote to accept the final audit. And now Craig will sort of give the details and maybe talk about some of the numbers.
Mr. Peacock?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Chairman, Members of Select Board, thank you. Audit Committee Chair and Select Board Member Green just gave a really great overview of the process, the meeting with the Audit Committee, and how the audit actually goes. So what I'll try to do here is give you a somewhat overview of maybe the highlights of the main changes this year, and go through the other two reports as well, and then by all means more than happy to address any questions that might arise. So for fiscal 2018, again, just to reiterate, the town received an unmodified opinion. It's the best opinion you can receive. The town has received, and again, it used to be called unqualified, it's now unmodified, as long as we've been working with the town. So that goes to, you know, the management, as well as your whole finance team and their diligence in addressing their responsibilities and their financial teams. This year, the largest change within the financials was the implementation of GASB75. We've been talking about it a little bit. It's been coming up, and GASB75 relates to the liability It's been coming up, and GASB-75 relates to the liability surrounding other post-employment benefits. Now, as we all know, this liability really has been there since the existence of time. It's just now that the GASB is requiring communities in Massachusetts to quantify it and address it within the full accrual financial statements of, in this case, the town of Brookline. So for fiscal eighteen, it brought on a $254 million liability. It sounds really large. It is, but, you know, in comparison to other communities of the size of Brookline, it's very consistent. You know, we have a number of communities in Massachusetts. We look at the audit reports, the different attributes that are used, the assumptions used to prepare, and we're very comfortable with both the firm and the assumptions used by the town of Brookline. I'd like to also say that the town, as of June thirty of eighteen, had little over $46 million in the OPEB trust fund. As far as AAA communities in Massachusetts go, you are number two as far as assets put aside. So that, I mean, thumbs up has to go to the town for being proactive. I know there's been an OPEB committee for a number of years discussing that and such. The town has many financial fiscal policies of how we utilize free cash, available funds, that type of thing, and there's always a town contribution to the OPEB trust fund, as well as, from what I understand, the plan would be, once the pension plan is fully funded, to divert some of those funds through OPEB. So that kind of brings me to the pension plan a little bit. So as I mentioned, this year, the new liability that hit the books was the GASB-75. OPEB, about three years ago, GASB-68 liability, which is very similar to GASB-75, just on the pension side of the world, that brought on a liability about three years ago, and in fiscal eighteen, the liability actually went down by about $6.5 million. And that's pretty consistent to what we've seen with all of our clients in Massachusetts. The reason being is, the town's financials are fiscal year, so June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. The retirement system is reported on a calendar year, so the system has been reported January one seventeen to December thirty-one seventeen. The investment performance in that period was far greater than the last couple of years. And what happens when the actuary takes that into account, it essentially helps to decrease your liability. The pension funds are an increase in net position this year of about $35 million to bring their cash and investments to about $309 million as of December thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen. So, and also, a very key point for the pension system is the town of Brookline is still on target to fully fund the unfunded liability by two thousand and thirty, where the state is now allowing communities to go to two thousand and forty, and we're still on board with two thousand and thirty, which, again, goes to complement the town's financial policies and working hard to address these liabilities. Again, in two thousand and eighteen, what we saw was cash, receivables, investments are being reconciled on a monthly basis. We are usually able to come in for a town the size of Brookline, we adhere in late July, early August to get started, and then the day right after Labor Day. That is pretty good for a town the size of Brookline, quite frankly. Your finance director this year also lost her assistant treasurer, who is responsible for a lot of the cash reconciliation procedures and such, and then ultimately, you know, had a new hire. Maybe the information was a couple of weeks later just because of, you know, the transition. However, what I would say is the product we received was just as good as it has been in the past. We got through all of the cash investments, receivables, with no issues whatsoever. So that was really good. Again, the town of Brookline, although this is not a CAFER, has historically put what we call a transmittal letter in the financial statements, which is about eleven pages long. It's very well-written. The transmittal allows the town to be proactive and forward-thinking and give some of the plan, financial plans and policies that the town is thinking of, whereas the management discussion and analysis does not allow that leeway. That can only be currently known facts as of June of eighteen. So again, we feel as a firm that that is a great addition to the town's financial statements, and it really gives the reader a lot of information on the town of Brookline and how the town is handling their finances and foresight in projects and such, you know, coming forward. As select member, as select board member Green mentioned, we met with the audit committee in November, thoroughly went through all the reports, answered any questions that they may have had, financial-related, whether, or the management letter-related, you know, we pretty much discussed the whole entire audit at that point, made some modifications to the reports, at which time the final drafts went out in preparation of tonight's meeting. Happy to say that through the conduct of our audit, and, you know, I've probably said this one the last couple of years, and it holds true, in working with the department heads of the town, we, as a firm, know that we're here five weeks out of the year, broken up in different timeframes. We don't expect your department heads and their teams to just stop what they're doing because we're here and we need work. But at the same time, we need work to keep going, and what we find is that the town is very willing and able, they provide a really great package upon our arrival, and they're very readily and able to answer questions and provide the information that we need to conduct our audit, answer questions, and answer any, you know, analytical obscurities, if you will, that we need to understand. Looking at your general fund, the town budgeted approximately a little over $8 million of available funds to balance the budget this year. However, because of strong collections, as well as the ability to control our costs, we actually had a $3.1 million budgetary surplus, which means that we do not have to use any of the budgeted available funds, free cash, to balance this year's budget. That has, it's historically been the case with, I mean, there are some years that we utilize a little bit of it, but I think what that also shows is that the town is budgeting somewhat conservatively and smart. They're not, you know, overstating what we feel our revenue's going to be and such, which allows some leeway and allows the town, quite frankly, to adhere to the fiscal policies that they've developed on how to utilize our free cash and available funds and address the various liabilities.
Can I jump in here? So, what you're referring to is on page eighty-six of the Report on Examination of Basic Financial Statements, and that, I think, is something that the select board members can focus on to sort of give them a sense of what you're talking about without going through all the other numbers that, you know, are more generally focused.
That is very true. Looking at page eighty-six and eighty-seven, it's kind of a two-page schedule. If we looked at page eighty-seven for a moment, first column to the left on eighty-seven is called Actual Budgetary Results, and if we follow that to the bottom, and the third number up is called Net Change and Fund Balance, and there's the $3.1 million that I referred to. So that shows that we have very strong collections, controlled our costs, and essentially did not need to utilize the available funds that were voted to balance the budget this year. Our debt service continues to be a very reasonable 4.8, just under 5% of budget, which for the size of the town of Brookline, if by itself, could be considered maybe almost a little low, however...
That's gonna change.
That is gonna change, but also dovetailed with the strong policy that the town has of funding with current revenues and over-available funds, some one-time articles and some other projects. It shows that the town is committed to maintaining their infrastructure, equipment, buildings, that type of thing. What I did was, is I looked back at the town's general fund. Now, the town has maintained a AAA bond rating for many years. When I went back about eight years and I looked at the general funds, what we call unassigned fund balance, that's essentially not your total fund balance, but it's the monies that haven't been either appropriated for continuing appropriations or the balance for the following fiscal year. Over the last eight to eleven years, we, the town, has consistently been in the mid-eights to 14% of budget. That is excellent. That is by far one of the, not only the fact that the rating agencies look for strong fiscal policies and management involvement in those fiscal policies, because when we, as a firm, meet with Moody's, S&amp;P to understand, what are they looking at? What are the big items that are, that could impact our ratings this year? They understand that even if communities put money aside in a stabilization fund, or we're trying to fund some projects with available funds, not go for bonding and such. They know we're going to have to use those monies at some time, but what they look for is management's plan to replenish. Does management have a plan? And generally speaking, the town of Brookline has a plan, has good fiscal policies, as I mentioned, is always looking at what we approve from the department revenue for free cash and how to then allocate, and all of these various attributes of how the town operates by far goes into the town's AAA rating. Stabilization fund this year is included, again, under GASB-54, for the last six years has been included as part of the general fund. It's a little over $6.3 million as of June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. A little bit about the enterprise funds. Your water and sewer enterprise fund, now, enterprise funds are designed to operate as a business of their own. Their rate structure should cover both their operational and capital costs. This year, your water and sewer fund had about a $1.1 million net income. That was a result of various things. They were able to control their costs this year. Usage, we had a little bit of increased usage where the controlling cost, and I mentioned upfront that the net pension liability decreased, so the portion of that liability attributable to the enterprise funds decreases their expenses in the current year, which helps to increase their net income, the bottom line. The golf course had about $57,000 decrease in fiscal eighteen, which realistically, when we look back at the golf course, there are always, you know, a break-even, you know, maybe a $60,000 profit to a $60,000 loss, somewhere in that ballpark. The main attributes that we see this year for the loss is, over the last number of years, the golf course has done some renovations, there's been some new capital assets, so therefore we have addition and issued debt for some of these projects. So, expense has gone up, some of the operational and payroll costs and supply costs just to maintain the land, the greenery, and that type of thing. All of those costs have gone up in comparison to prior years. So realistically, we don't see a $57,000 shortfall in golf to be extremely concerning because realistically, there are attributes, some of that is depreciation, which is really non-cash, and so really, it's kind of operating as designed when we look at golf courses amongst most of our clients. I mentioned, the pension fund, again, had an increase of $35 million, mostly attributable to investment performance, to a balance of $390 million. You may have noticed in looking at the statements, the fiduciary statements that generally would report, the pension plan and the OPEB trust, that this year they're combining into one column. The GASB now wants all employee benefit-related funds to be in one column, and there is a new footnote, if I remember correctly, it is note thirteen, that is what we call individual financial statements for the pension and the OPEB trust that will tie back into the actual financial statement. In summary, you know, for the financials, I guess one last thing, we also issued, the town issued about $44 million worth of long-term debt this year, mostly related to devotion school project, the fire facility, and a reservoir park project, as well as there was an MWRA loan issued in the water fund. Ultimately, that's a summary of the financials. Looking, again, as I mentioned, looking at the trend, your fund balances have remained very strong, your, the use of free cash has remained consistent with your financial policies. I mentioned your OPEB trust is second in the state. I think that the financial statements, in our opinion, look really well, really well. I could either answer questions, if there are any, on the financials, or move to the other reports?
Questions? Quickly, because we're starting to run a little late.
Okay. I want to ask questions.
Okay.
Okay. Brings us to the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. This report simply outlines all federal dollars spent by the town in fiscal eighteen. And again, it could be education, police, fire, community development, any federal dollar that come in. There was approximately $6 million spent in fiscal eighteen, of which each year there are what we call a cycle of major programs. This year, the major programs that we had to do our compliance audit in looking at the federal regulations surrounding those programs were the school lunch cluster and the special education cluster. The school lunch cluster had no findings. The special education cluster had one continuing finding where their final report was filed a little bit late, and there are also some documents that we refer to, retirement effort certifications. A really quick nutshell, if I'm a school department employee and I work a little bit in the special ed program and maybe I also teach math for second grade, there has to be a documentation of how much my salary and how it's being allocated to the federal grant. Those form, there has been some turnover and some change in responsibilities within the school department, so those forms did fall through the cracks for this past year. However, they did not rise to the level of what we would call needing a modified opinion, so the federal report also received a unmodified opinion for fiscal eighteen. So that is a clean opinion.
Okay.
That leads up to the management letter.
Okay.
The management letter had two comments from last year, one of which was fully resolved in relation to the town clerk's office. We had done a site visit, as we refer to it, last year, and any comments that we had there were resolved this year. Select board member Green mentioned the accrued scholarships. In a nutshell, there really isn't any errors in the accounting side for the scholarships. What we've seen is that there, the amount of scholarships issued and not being claimed is really skyrocketing, lack of a better word. Therefore, it's making, it's causing the accounting for them to become a little bit cumbersome. There are people that maybe were awarded a scholarship six years ago that have not come and claimed that scholarship. So we were just recommending that maybe the school committee develop a policy on scholarships. What makes someone eligible? Do they have a timeframe to claim it? What happens after that timeframe? Should it not claim, does it go back into the pool to then be offered to other students and that type of thing? That's kind of a nutshell on that one. Couple of new comments this year, again, there was just some money... Couple of new comments this year, again, there was just some money, the, the school had a budgetary shortfall this year, and there was some money utilized from a revolving fund that wasn't really eligible to be used for the general fund budget. Corrections have been made, both within the town's books, the financial statements, all parties have discussed, and I feel confident at this point that we should not see this going forward. Last comment this year is what we refer to as an informational comment. We have had, both in the state of Massachusetts, as well as the other states in the, around the United States, over the last, let's say, 18 months, there have been many hacks within the systems. People are holding, hackers, I guess we call them, are holding the information hostage, looking for some sort of payment to, you know, release the records and that type of thing. I know that the town of Brookline has a pretty robust IT department. They're involved in quite a bit in securities and such. Even when we're here, we have to go through a protocol, even just use our little thumb drives on various computers because of potential viruses and such. But for, for us as a firm, we've rolled this out to all of our clients this year, just because of the prevalence that we're seeing of issues occurring in other municipalities. And now, there's, there's firms that will come in and do a cybersecurity review, and quite frankly, there are state grants available for that, so it doesn't cost the community anything upfront, except for the cost would be then be incurred, should there be a corrective plan that the town wants to move forward with. So we thought that that was an important comment this year to bring to the attention of all our clients. And in summary, I'd like to just thank, again, the town, from the top down, all your financial departments that we work with, were a pleasure to work with, provided information timely, and provided a accurate package of information. And, you know, as, as, as maybe a funniest side, there was a new office built all the way down on the first floor, some people joked at us a little while, they put you in a basement, but in actuality, it, it worked out great. Plenty of room, phones, abilities for the internet, it worked out great, so we were very happy with that space. So in a nutshell, the audit went very well, and more than happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay, thank you. I especially appreciate your comment at the end about cybersecurity. We don't think about it until we have an incident, and I think we need to avoid those incidents because they're very painful and potentially expensive if they occur. And having been involved in IT in the federal sector, I've seen some of the, the risks that happens, so that's, it's good that we, we're on top of that, and we do the best we can to avoid those things. I don't want to give the audit short shrift, because this is important, and this is discussing how we account for over $300 million of the taxpayers' dollars, but I will note that we're running late, so.
Were we able to put these online?
Uh...
They are online.
Yeah, they're online. So I encourage interested folks to read these, it makes great bedtime reading. And so I guess I will move that we accept the audit report. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco.
Aye.
Select Person Heller.
Aye.
Select Person Green.
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Um, we're probably running about a half hour to 40-ish minutes late. So for those of you here for the 7:30 hearings, we're about, I would guess, a half hour away, give or take. So I apologize. So we have an item that doesn't happen too often. I don't think this has happened since I've been on the board, and this is the question of potentially overruling the three wardens' objection to the removal of a public shade tree located at 34 Jamaica Road, and I will turn it over to Mr. Brady to tell us what's happening, and then I'll give Mr. Waters an opportunity, and anyone else who wishes to speak, and board can ask questions, and we'll see where we go. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here this evening to talk to you about Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, an enthralling piece of legislation which governs our public shade trees. I know we're running late. I just wanted to take one moment and introduce a member of the team you typically don't see, and that's a member of our field staff. There's many men and women out there who make everything happen behind the scenes that we don't often get a chance to recognize. With me tonight is Peter Judris. Peter is our far tree supervisor, he's also a certified arborist like myself, and when folks call on the phone and say, "Mr. Brady, can you trim my tree? Can you plant my tree?", I say, "Absolutely no problem." And I hang up, and I pick up my phone and say, "Hey, Peter, can you go prune that tree? Can you go plant that tree?"" So Peter is one of those folks who's with me during all hours, hurricanes, snowstorms, wind events, macro events, and he's taken some time to come see the other side of the house, so I just wanted to recognize him and thank him for that. So, and the agenda item, it's very difficult to describe this on the agenda. So, Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, was enacted just a brief time ago in 1899, and governs shade trees within the public right of way. In the memo that I gave you, there's two snippets from the law. In Section 3 of Mass. General Law, it defines what a public shade tree is, that is a tree or any portion of a tree thereof that falls within the public right of way. I gave you some explanation of the hearing process. I know we're running late, so we're going to skip over that. We had a public hearing, it was duly noticed, all things went, all those things went well. Section 4, which is the next section of Chapter 87, says that if someone objects, and this has been tested through the courts, and unfortunately I've been on sitting in seats testifying to this fact, if someone objects in writing to the removal of that tree, the tree remains, unless one of two things happen. Either I, as the tree warden, deem it a public hazard, because I'm allowed to remove trees by the hearing if they are deemed to present a hazard to those traveling within the public way, or it is overruled by either the mayor and his city, or the board of selectmen in a town forming from it. Which brings us to why we're here tonight. So it's not my objection, per se, I want to be clear on that. I did opine in my memo what my, what my position is on the tree, but that is, kind of gives you a quick framework for why we're here tonight. Does that all make sense to this point? Okay. So, this issue of trees versus driveways, obviously when you're in an environment, in fairness, I would say frankly, this stage of the day, anything inside 495, trees in the public right of way versus trying to get access to properties behind them, is a challenge that we as an industry face across the board. It's something that I deal with quite a bit. Peter and I were out at South Street today, looking at another such situation, and I have another scheduled for tomorrow. It's not at all unusual. And we strive wherever possible to find solutions to that. And this issue of, of having a property and not knowing what the rules are that govern those trees in front is not uncommon. So I thought it would be helpful just to quickly run through a couple other examples that we have in town. This is an example on Gardner Road, I purposely left out addresses, specific addresses. Our Gardner Road, where this was a two-car garage that was constructed, and inadvertently they assumed they'd be able to remove the tree with no issue, and that was not the case, so they had to redesign and come around to the side of the street, street tree, public shade tree. This is one down on Naples Road, very similar situation, fairly new development, about eight years old at this point. They constructed the house, actually constructed the driveway, the garage, poured the driveway, and then realized that they couldn't get out. So you'll see, not only did they have to work their way around the tree, but they put a guard in place in front of the tree. This is back when Mr. Shepherd was the building commissioner, and found a solution where the tree's protected, but they can still get in and out of their driveway. This is one just down the street on Gardner Road, they're going to be coming in to the left of the house here, and this just discussion took place in the last three to four weeks, where they're going to go in and use what's called air, air spade excavation, and actually vacuum all the dirt out from around the roots, carefully place what's called flowable fill in around the roots, so, and then that will allow them access to the driveway. And this is a good example, I put this in there because there's not a lot to see, but it goes to some of what I try to use as guiding principles. This type of intrusive effort is far from perfect for a tree, but we've got to find solutions where we can find them. And so this was a good example where we could find a situation where we could find the middle ground. This one is down on Bee Street, because this goes to a solution I hear a lot, which is all just, "I'll pick the tree up and I'll move it." And in most cases, you can't. This is one down on Bee Street where they could. Six years ago, they picked this tree up, used to be right there, slid it down 12 feet, put it back down in the ground, gave us a performance bond, we held it for four years to make sure the tree would grow. The value on that tree, six years ago, for the performance bond, I went back and looked it up, was about $26,000.
Really?
So, that was another situation we're trying to find creative examples. Which brings us to Jamaica Road. We have a situation, they came in, the proponent, and have a property, Mr. Jacob will speak to this, again, it's an access issue. Here is the oak tree in question, it's approximately 24 inches in diameter. There are 19 red oak trees on the street, of the 19 red oak trees on the street, 13 of them, the first 13 in a row, are the same size, the same caliper, the same species, the same age. They're 24 inches in diameter. Peter and I were discussing this at dinner just a little while ago, averaging a half-inch thickness per year, which is generous for an oak tree, that would put them right now to about 50 years old. Probably a little bit older because they're growing in sidewalks, so, which would put this canopy, meaning it's on second generation, or second generation of residents have enjoyed it. We have other streets in town with red oak trees that are much larger, and they're in their third or fourth generation. If you turn and you look down the street, this gives you a good street view where you're looking down the street, and you can see in the distance the canopy that continues. It's consistently a 50 to 70-foot spacing all the way down the street. The folks who requested the removal, I want to give their due, they tried to work their engineer and find a way around the tree. I know they talked to Peter Diddo about it, about a curb cut to try and find a solution. There just is not a solution here to get into this property without completely removing the public shade tree in question. So we went through the hearing process, the way we do the hearing is if we have three or four or five trees on the hearing, we take all the testimony in the hearing, so, and once the hearing closes, once the hearing, the testimony is given, excuse me, then we discuss all the trees in question and render a decision at that time. So, it does get a little bit confusing, because over time, things have changed in this context. Not so very long ago, the Tree Planting Committee served as the tree warden for the town of Brookline. I was appointed as the tree warden many years ago. So we had a Tree Planting Committee meeting, that concluded and adjourned, and then that rolled right into the public hearing, which is held by myself as the tree warden in accordance with Mass. General Law. Those members of the Tree Planting Committee are allowed to remain and stay in place, just like any other members of the public. So the three written objections you have in front of you tonight are from Nadine, Liz Erdman, and Hugh Madison, are the three written objections that you have in front. I opine in my memo, and I will state in the meeting that I empathize and I feel for the situation. I do feel in this situation, unfortunately, it's, the tree's been there for 50 years. I'd love to see it there for another 50 years. I think if we take it out, it's going to leave a big hole in the canopy, and this is a situation that is something that we deal with on a fairly regular basis. And that in a snapshot to try and assist in getting things back on schedule is a brief synopsis of how we got here.
Mr. Walters?
Thank you, members of the committee. I'm Jacob Walters, Walter Shannon and Chaz in here in Brookline at 27 Harvard Street, and I represent Bea Yow, who's sitting right here, she is the owner of 34 Jamaica Road. It's not often that I take issue with anything Mr. Brady says, particularly if it relates to trees, clearly. However, I'm going to in terms of the age of this tree, and not because I know personally, but the information I've received from members of the neighborhood is that the tree in question used to be in front of the passageway, which I'll get to in a minute, and that was removed 25 years ago, we're not exactly sure, but it was removed more recently, certainly than 50, and replanted right in front of what we'd like to have as a driveway. Couple of things I want to go into, and I'll try to be quick, I realize, again, time is an issue here, but 34 Jamaica Road is the only house on that street without a driveway. The only house that doesn't have any parking. As you can see, and I've got, if I may approach, I've got a couple of photographs that may give some help, if I can provide them.
Sure.
Give my remarks, but I want to provide that. One of the things is that, to the right of 34 Jamaica Road is a passageway, created in 1914 by the town of Brookline, and it's used for residents of the, I believe, of the people on, behind the public housing, it's used as a passageway. My client originally had a conversation with, or reached out to the housing department to see if there was any chance they would provide an easement, just for the purpose of getting in and turning into her rear, rear yard. It was a short conversation, and the answer was absolutely not, and that's fine, we made the effort, and I recognize, it's not a well-used passageway, but it is a passageway. So that was one option. And if I may for a second, I'm just going to pause and hand out a couple of things that...
Would use of the passageway to get into the back of the house impede the use as a pedestrian passageway?
Well, I think the rationale for saying no was simply that it is a pedestrian passageway, and the idea of a vehicle, two or three or four vehicles coming in and out, was not something that the housing authority was, was interested in seeing happen. You know, while I'd like to see my client have a solution, I understand the town's point of view, or at least housing's point of view. If I may approach, just want to...
Sure.
... perhaps, one of the things I'm passing along is a letter that was actually before the tree committee, but my client had a number of neighbors sign this in support of what they're asking for. I want to show also, if I may, the passageway itself, this is the one that we're not going to be allowed to use. This is a photograph of the tree in question, and I'll get to that in a minute, but pointing out that it is causing some havoc on sidewalk, in terms of the root structure. And, oh, and then I want to point out one last photograph, which is where the old tree, when I say the old tree, the tree at the end of the passageway used to be, and it's still evidence that it been moved, the sidewalk's not there, it still shows where there had once been a tree. And we think it was perhaps 25, 30 years ago, maybe less, we're not certain. I certainly wouldn't know, but neighbors tell us that it wasn't that many years ago. Now, what my client's done is been to the planning board a couple of different times, seeking some way of finding a path for a driveway. Some of the proposals were to go around the tree. Planning board wasn't, wasn't accepting that idea, partly because they felt that the construction of the driveway would not let the tree survive, and part of it was, they felt that safety in terms of people walking up and down the street would be perhaps compromised by that tree being there. My client also sought to, at some real expense, to create underground parking in the front of the dwelling. Planning board wasn't, wasn't happy with that. And in fact, part of why we appealed the tree committee's decision is because planning board encouraged us rather strongly to do so, and their position was, and by the way, I'm not meaning to speak for planning board, but their theory was, or their guidance to us was, that the relief we need for a driveway and parking in the rear is not significant. There is relief needed, and we will be, if, if things work out for us, we would be before them for a driveway and for parking, but the relief would not be particularly significant. And what we're offering, my client's offering, in mitigation of the removal of the tree, would be another tree, which we, which my client would pay for and, and have planted, with Mr. Brady's guidance, 10 feet away, eight feet away, 12 feet away, on the same street, in her lot, her front yard, but not where the driveway needs to be. And what I would point out is that, why the town, when they moved the tree, put it right where they did, I can't speak to, but there is a precedent for moving a tree, and I recognize and certainly respect the members of the committee who voted against this, and I appreciate that they don't want to see a mature tree be taken down, and I, I respect that. I think the issue that I'm asking you to consider is weighing that replacement tree which we're offering, and if there's a performance bond needed, my client would do it. I mean, we're not going to just put something there and if it dies, walk away. This is her home, and so hopefully, she's going to enjoy that tree like the rest of the neighborhood. What we're asking for consideration for is, if this tree is removed but replaced, the benefit to my client is obvious, three, possibly four spaces in the rear. I think the benefit to the town exists as well, for example, historically, the people who have lived in that house and they've... For example, historically, the people who have lived in that house, and they've almost been tenants, parked on the street and found overnight parking in the neighborhood. If my client's allowed to find parking, or to promote parking in the rear, we're going to have three to four fewer car parking on the street, and we're going to have three cars that are not going to be needing rental spaces, which will free up something for other people. I go to Downsfield myself on occasion, and I can tell you, it's tough to park there. Parking is an issue, as in all of Brookline. I think getting some cars off the street can't be a bad thing for the town, for the neighborhood. And I want to point out, and I appreciate that Mr. Brady mentioned how this process worked, but I want to point out, to my client's benefit, but I think it's a fact that we need to keep in mind, is that not one member or neighbor on Jamaica Road came and opposed this. We don't have everybody's signature, but no one has come before a recent Planning Board meeting to say, I oppose the tree coming down. No one went to that committee meeting back in December and opposed it. The only people who opposed it were the members of that committee, again, I respect their point of view about taking down a tree, but the neighborhood is not opposed to this at all. We are not going to hurt the canopy and the streetscape, because we are offering another tree. And so, I ask you to consider the benefit to the town, and the benefit, obviously, to my client, and I think the mitigation of a separate tree to offset the removal of that tree we're talking about. And again, that, the kind of tree, if it's a red oak, fine. If it's some other tree that would be a little less of a root structure, we would be guided by either our own arborist with Mr. Brady's consultation, or himself. We're willing to do whatever is required. Anyway, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Questions from the board?
Yeah. Well, I'll ask Mr. Brady, and I'll also ask Mr. Walters. So, this is a 24-inch caliber tree.
Yes, ma'am.
I suspect, given my education by you and others on the Tree Protection Study Committee, that it's very hard to replace a 24-inch caliber tree with a tree of the same size. Is that correct?
It is not possible, it's correct.
Okay. So, what we're talking about, when we're talking about replacement, is a loss of a number of years of growth. I mean, it could be a straggling little tree, you know, a baby tree, I'll call it, rather straggling is kind of nasty, but a baby tree.
We have lost--
With no canopy, in essence.
It will, based on science, it's decades of growth. It's four and a half to five decades of growth. So, Mr. Walters brings up a good point about the entryway during the discussion of the Tree Planting Committee. It piqued my interest. So, those of you who may have memory banks, remember George Barlow, who was the town arborist. So, Peter and I still converse with George. So, I said to George, said, "George, what's the deal with that?" The tree wasn't replanted. At 25 years old, it would have been eight or 10 inches, which is too big to move. What was planted was another red oak, slightly larger size. The tree came out on the pathway because of a fire incident up in the housing. It wasn't a big incident, but the fire department wasn't happy they couldn't get past the tree. So, the tree came out. So, that was the issue.
I see. So, it had to be moved at that, it had to be taken down.
It was removed, and then a new tree was planted, yes. But it's, this particular tree, I think if you look at the characteristics of the trees that line the street, the size, the species, and addition are all similar. So, this one wasn't too far off from the rest of them.
Could I ask another question, Mr. Walters? How long has your client owned this property?
I want to say a year or so?
A year.
A year and a half. And by the way, she understood before she bought it that there was an issue, and that she consulted with me in advance. So, we appreciate that this wasn't a surprise, but at the same time, it's difficult to make, nowadays, if you don't have parking, it's a hardship. And my client will rent spaces if that's necessary, and that's fine. We respect that that may happen. Except that, I know, I'm happy to say that trees were planted on the street I live, on Stern's Road, and it didn't take a whole long time for them to grow pretty strong and tall, and look pretty good. And I grant you, they won't, it'll take time before it gets to the level of other trees, but I still would suggest that replacing the tree is not an unreasonable request, or at least I hope it's not.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll ask just if one person from the Tree Planting Committee wishes to present a position. Is there anyone from the neighborhood who would like to speak? Okay, so, you know, Mr. Madison.
Hugh Madison, I'm on the Tree Planting Committee, and I'm also a town meeting member from precinct five. I sent this to you a couple of weeks ago. This is a map that's taken from the town's GIS, and it shows a continuous row of trees that are spaced 50 to 70 feet apart on Jamaica Road. And it makes very obvious what will happen when that tree is taken out, it'll leave a big gap. In a sense, trees are an extension of our parks, and it's a way of neighbors having their own little park, in a sense. And removing it, it's really a neighborhood asset. It's not, even though they're outside somebody's house, that's really part of a neighborhood asset, and that was our approach to this. They also, the permanent gap I mentioned in the streetscape would be there, and as was pointed out, it'll be a long time, long after we're gone, when that has a similar canopy, even if it was on the street. And also, removal, we've had a couple of situations before where people want to put a driveway, and when we can, we find a way around it. But in this case, if this is removed, it'll set a precedent, and my suspicion is, we'll have a lot of people coming in and saying, "Oh, I want a driveway now," and what can we say? We'll be back in front of you, I guess. So, thank you.
Ah, well, welcome.
Yes, I've been a resident of--
Why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Carl Olson. I live over on Highland Road. And I know Jamaica Road very well, because I walk down Jamaica Road every single day. In fact, I'll walk past this tree every single day, because I don't have parking, and I have to rent a parking space down at 34 Jamaica Road. So, I've been very aware of this particular tree.
Beyond 30, not at 34?
No, I rent at 24 Jamaica Road.
Right, okay.
Two more down.
Because if you were renting at 34, we wouldn't have this problem.
You got the 34 on my mind. The thing of what I've noticed there is that the benefits are significant to having parking at that space. I know that the attorney spoke, I think, very well to the fact that the neighborhood is heavily used, and I know for myself that I don't have private parking, so I have to rent parking space, and Downs Field is very popular. So, knowing that we could find more parking that's off-street would be a great benefit. I also think that the tree itself, if it, so where I live on Highland Road, two of the trees in front of my building have come down. One, because there was a snowstorm, and one of the limbs broke. The other one, I think a moving van drove into it. But the point is, is that the arborist looks to a tree, if it's in any way sick, it comes down. So, this is a healthy tree, and that's really kind of the bigger question of like, well, do you do anything because it's healthy? I would argue that this tree was actually put there by us as people, so we chose to put a tree here. We can also choose to change whether or not that tree is there. The benefit of the parking wins, in my opinion. The neighborhood has definitely not objected, and I've talked to a lot of people along the way, and I can see where a new tree could go in, and for sure, it takes time for these trees to grow. But that's the nature of a tree, it takes time to grow. I don't see it as depleting the canopy. I know that during all different seasons, I've followed how much light and leafiness there is, and it's a very tree-friendly street. So, I'm here to give my support behind the development. I do think that the benefits to the town, as far as tax base and the asset of the property being developed, it's been a year and a half fallow, which is a long time. I see all those benefits actually paying for the tree in more subtle ways.
Okay. Nadine, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'll say.
Come on up to the mic.
So, I just wanted to add a couple of points.
Why don't you introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Nene Gertz, resident place, and the chair of the Tree Planting Committee. So, for one, I mean, the tree versus driveway question is a big one that we could argue for a long time, but street trees are public assets, and parking is a private asset, so that is a big part of that. I'm speaking for the trees, the public trees. And the other important thing to note is that red oaks are particularly slow-growing. So, to have a tree with red oaks, to have a street lined with red oaks, is something special in Brookline, and I think we should try to keep this tree alive for as long as possible, because it's an important public asset. And then, the other point I thought about just in listening to the conversation, is I would encourage the town to encourage the Housing Authority to allow the resident to use the right-of-way that is already paved. It's quite wide, I think it's, you know, it's at least maybe 15 feet wide, so there wouldn't be constant traffic on it, but if they could get an easement and use that, I think that would solve the problem, and it would prevent more paving between two houses that are very close together, and that there's actually quite a steep slope between those two houses. It's steeper than the access of the right-of-way. So, it feels like we could circle back and resolve this, and find out why the Housing Authority really is against providing access.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at a picture of the right-of-way. I don't know if you'd like to look. Excuse my dirty screen.
Here's one of the pictures that was given to us.
Putting cars and pedestrians in the same right-of-way is--
Yeah, it's tough.
Not really a good policy.
So, I guess, I guess it's time-- Actually, that's tough, because there's a thing, concrete--
Fire department allows--
--planter there, that would be difficult to move, maybe if you have a front loader or something.
Yeah, I would say that's a fire.
So, I guess it's time for us to deliberate, and I think on this one, I'm going to go first. I guess the prerogative of the chair. I appreciate the value of the tree, and the, and I take Ms. Gertz's comments about red oak especially to heart, and it pains me to take a healthy tree down, but I'm swayed by the fact that there has been no objections from the neighborhood. It's a neighborhood I live in, and a part of the neighborhood that I live in, and houses are very close together, and I don't see any other alternative, and parking is very valuable, and normally, in the trade-off, trees versus parking, I would come down on the side of the trees, but in this one, I'm going to go with the parking, and I'm going to vote with the homeowner.
I would like to say something. I spent Saturday afternoon tagging failing trees with mothers out front. Due to the number of gas leaks that we have all over town, we have a lot of trees that are failing. And I live at the corner of Longwood and St. Paul, and we've lost two very important shade trees, and I notice it every day. So, the idea of taking down a healthy tree to put up a parking lot of about four spaces that will just generate revenue for a private citizen, I can't, I can't get behind. I drive now to work, because I have to, and I live in a building that does not have parking, so I have to rent a space off-site. And I do that, because I knew what I was getting into when I moved into the building that I chose to live in. Trees are pillars of our community, and should not be taken down unless absolutely necessary. So, I will not be supporting this.
Well, I agree with Ms. Hamilton. I, you know, I'm sympathetic to the homeowner, but I do believe that the homeowner knew what he and she were about when they purchased the property. I also agree with Ms. Gertz that, you know, I would certainly be happy to, for this board to send a letter to the Housing Authority urging them to reconsider, and, you know, I would also question whether that stanchion in front of the easement there blocks fire department access, and safety, for safety reasons. So, this is a special tree, in the sense that it's, in its relative youth, maybe it's a teenager, but it's a very healthy teenager, and it's valuable in the sense that it takes a long time to get it, to get one of these to this state, and they're very valuable, they are very valuable trees, they're beautiful, they provide canopy, they help clean the environment, and clean up the messes we're making with our, all of our carbon emissions, et cetera. They absorb water, they're very valuable. And so, I agree with Ms. Hamilton, and I will vote to support the tree, but also to urge the Housing Authority to reconsider its opinion, because I think that that is a way of, you know, that's a way of solving the problem. Pedestrians and cars in Brookline are used to sharing the same spaces. We do it all the time. So, I think it should, there should be a way we could figure that out.
Mr. Green?
I'm inclined to vote to allow the removal of the tree, but I agree with Flacherus and Heller, that we really need to urge the Housing Authority to reconsider their position, because that's an obvious solution that would be beneficial to all, probably including the Housing Authority, in terms of access of fire engines through that passageway. But the thing that I think is most persuasive, or one of the things that is most persuasive, is that the neighbors don't care, and that's important. I mean, it's not as if you don't have a tree canopy on this street. The idea of a gap, and it's not like a gap in your teeth, you know, you can lose a tooth, but, I mean, I'm not convinced that that is a strong argument. And I'm a little concerned about ignoring the needs of the homeowner, and we can go back and forth as to whether we want more, what I call heat islands in town, but, you know, that's the reality we face in a town where we don't have on-street parking. And, you know, maybe, and I think that, you know, this is a valid, a valid project for us to allow. The other thing is, young trees remove carbon also, and maybe we should, you know, talk about more than one tree. So, I'm inclined to vote in favor of the homeowner. I'm inclined, I can--
Okay.
You're reserving your right.
You're reserving your right.
I'm not going to bury the headline here. I am going to devote to keep the tree where it is. I am not convinced that this is a hardship, not being able to build the driveway, for the simple fact that this building, by Mr. Walters' admission, has been occupied by tenants in the past and presumably has been fully rented, so there is a solution here that's been put into practice in the past. I respect the fact that the neighborhood has not, at least vigorously opposed this, but I would make the argument that this is across the street from a public park, which draws people from outside of the neighborhood, and it's, Jamaica Road is a little bit more of a community asset than a street that's not abutting a public facility, sort of buried in a residential neighborhood, pardon the expression, or the way of expressing that thought. So, I think, I think I join my colleagues in saying that the housing authority perhaps should reconsider their position on use of the passageway, but again, I'm not convinced that this, this tree should come down based on this request for construction of a driveway.
So, let me, let me do two motions. One would be on the tree, and the other would be a motion to the housing authority to reconsider using the granting an easement on the right-of-way if pedestrian safety can be accommodated or something, if it could be more eloquently worded.
So, before we vote on that, could I ask the town administrator, should we, or Mr. Brady perhaps, have you gotten a, a recommendation from the fire department about that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, we don't know, so I think it's worth asking. I mean, it's a matter of public safety, at least from, unless they say that they can get to that, to those buildings behind without having to go down that passageway.
Okay, so, we can take that as a...
I'm not asking that we vote on that, but I do think that that should be something that we, that we ask about.
So, the vote will be whether or not, if, the vote will be to overrule the tree warden's objection to the removal of the public shade tree. So, if you're voting to keep the tree, you're going to vote no. So, on the motion, select person Franco?
No.
Select person Heller?
No.
Select person Green?
Yes.
Select person Hamilton?
No.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion fails three to two. Two to three, wow, you get the gist. Second motion that I'll make is to urge the housing authority to reconsider its objections to a grant of easement if pedestrian safety, if pedestrian safety can be successfully accommodated.
Should we ask them to communicate to us, you know, whether they can do that?
Sure, with a report back to the select board, and it, you know, I'm looking at a photo. It may entail, I don't know if there's a lot of room here, that the easement, that maybe there's some encroachment toward, towards the house or something. I don't know if that can be done.
May I just respectfully suggest that if this?
Yep.
If this board and the housing authority found it possible, we would need to involve town council in terms of any kind of language for an easement that would get recorded, but it would only be for this property, I presume, and nobody else. We're the only one that would, we're the only abutter. In other words, I'd say the easement would be very limited to 34 Jamaica, just for that little, just for enough of a space to get it in the back, no one else would have use of it.
Right, so, we can state that in our resolution. So, easement for vehicular access to the rear of 34 Jamaica by residents or tenants of 34 Jamaica?
Right.
Or visitors. With a, with reporting back to this, to this board, with a report back to this board. All those in favor of that motion, if I state it clearly?
I'm sorry, you mentioned the issue of encroachment. Did you mean?
That's just...
Removal of that fence that's there?
Perhaps, and...
And how does the homeowner feel about that?
That's a detail that would have to be worked out.
I don't think that can pose a problem for my client.
The weather, and then, all this is, of course, is subject to zoning board of, planning board, zoning board of appeals.
If housing allowed the easement, we would likely have to go back to planning for, just, I'm not sure if it'd be as of right, but we'd have to double-check with them, and since it's a driveway that's already existing, it would be simply a matter of whether the spaces conform, and I think we could do it as a matter of right, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, so, all that would be subject to the zoning process. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to urge the housing authority to reconsider its easement if pedestrian safety can be, how did I put it? Satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
No.
And chair votes aye. Okay, that's four one. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, so, I apologize for those waiting for the license hearings, but sometimes you get it right, the timing, and sometimes you don't, so please accept my apology. So, the first up is a public hearing on the application of Rockland Food and Beverage doing business as Lully's Cafe, and this is at 111 Boilson Street for Transfer Stock, and appointing Claremont Food and Beverage. Removing Lillian Carney 100% and appointing Claremont Food and Beverage 100%. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow other members of the board. My name is Brian Hughes, I'm an attorney for the applicant, Rockland Food and Beverage LLC. Before you on this first matter is essentially what is said in the description, spirit of brevity considering the night has gone long. Lillian Carney, who is the current owner of the LLC, is interested in transferring her ownership interests. She's selling the LLC to Claremont Food and Beverage. Claremont is actually related to Rockland Food and Beverage. For those who don't know, this is a hotel with a bar.
Right.
The hotel is owned by a company known as Claremont Brookline Suites, and operated by Claremont Hotels, and when this was first constructed and built, Ms. Carney, who is a family member of the family that owned the Claremont Companies, it's a private company, but it's a very large private company owned by the Carney family, it was her prerogative, she wanted to run the bar, but since which time Claremont has now built three more hotels, two more in the works, another one down the road in Brookline, and it's no longer working to have an individual run the bar, so she's going to be, if this plan is approved, she's going to be selling her interest to Claremont Food and Beverage. That LLC owns, right now, Needham Food and Beverage, which runs the bar and the hotel that Claire owned in Needham, and it's actually right now pending approval by the ABCC to own the company that owns a liquor license in Bridgewater for their hotel in Bridgewater. So, what Claremont's trying to do is to consolidate its, you know, it's almost like it's an octopus right now, we're trying to make it consolidate it into one entity to have basically the flow chart more simple and, dare I use a, might sound not the right word, but a corporatize it, suppose to have individuals running the operation. This, this way of doing business has already been approved once by the ABCC and twice by two of the municipalities.
So, the bar services mainly the guests?
Mainly, it's open to the public as all licensed establishments are, but it's primarily designed to be an amenity to the guests.
Right, yeah.
And none of the operations will change whatsoever, the name stays the same, everything stays the same, it's just whoever, you know, is in the flow chart as the actual owner would change.
Any questions from the board before I open it up to the public? Any members of the public wish to speak for, against this license? I see none.
We're changing the manager too.
Right.
Correct.
So, yeah, and then, the second item is the change of managers. Why don't you just address that quickly?
Certainly, thank you. The second matter is a change of liquor license manager. The current manager, Mr. Buchanan, is no longer working for the company, and he proposed that Mr. Richard Roberto, who's here before you, can answer any of your questions, be installed as manager. He has over 18 years' experience in being a general manager at hotels, he is the current general manager, and he has years of experience being a liquor license manager as well. He meets all the qualifications set by the state and the town of Brookline, and we've had conversations and correspondence with Lieutenant Raskin of the Brookline Police Department. As my understanding, he had no objection, I don't know if there's any correspondence, we were working with him on Friday afternoon, so I might not reach her yet.
Yeah, we've got it. Great.
Maybe we can hear from Mr. Roberto about his conversation with Lieutenant Raskin and some of the Brookline-specific licensing regulations that we have.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Richard Roberto, I'm the general manager at the Homewood Suites. I've had a few conversations with Lieutenant Raskin. I've satisfied all the requirements except for one at this point. Something new to me was fingerprinting that came up. As soon as I got that information, I made the call to the person at the police department. I have yet to hear back from him, but I'm readily available to have my fingerprints done. I've also arranged for alternative managers, members of my executive committee at the hotel, to get the proper certifications. We've all gone through tips training, in-person tips training. One other requirement that came up last week was a crowd manager certification, and out of the five people, including myself, three of us have already gotten that within like the first day. The other two, just because of scheduling conflicts, haven't been able to do it, but will sometime by the end of this week, and then they will all have to get fingerprinted as well. As far as myself, I've had consecutively 19 years of licensed experience. I've been licensed in Chelsea, Boston, Burlington previously, Woburn at one time as well, so I've had probably closer to 30 years of licensed experience. I've never had any violations occur under my watch as well, so.
Cool, okay.
That was one of the best summaries that we've...
Yeah.
Been doing it for a long time.
Any questions, comments from the board? Let me go through the motion then. I'll move that we approve the application of Rockland Food and Beverage LLC doing business as Lully's Cafe, holder of a seven-day all kinds alcohol beverage common vituums license at 111 Boilson Street for a transfer stock, removing Lillian B. Carney 100%, and appointing Claremont Food and Beverage 100%. And I'll make the second motion, we'll vote the two of them together. I'll also move that we approve the application of Rockland Food and Beverage LLC doing business as Lully's Cafe, holder of a seven-day all kinds alcohol beverage common vituums license at 111 Boilson Street for change of manager from Kevin James Buchanan to Richard Roberto. All those in favor of the two motions, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
The next item is perhaps a sad one, maybe it's a happy one, and this is a transfer of ownership of Cuckoo Cafe. This is Seven Station Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and select board members. My name is Timothy Keneely. I'm with the law firm of Foley &amp; Foley, and I am the attorney for the applicant, Jamie Syracusea, and Brothers &amp; Sisters Company LLC, which will be doing business as Cuckoo This is a, basically just a transfer of the business from one owner to another. The applicant is planning to run the establishment in the exact same manner, with the exact same menu and seating and not changing just about anything, so those who enjoy the cafe will continue to enjoy the cafe, and she's going to try to bring some, some young energy to the establishment, and she's been working there for two months and gotten to know a lot of the customers and how it's run, and feels very comfortable in that, in that setting, and we feel that there's, it's going to be a very smooth transition. We're hoping to close on the deal on Thursday with a lease extension for 42 months beyond the current lease, which ends in June of next year, and everything looks like it's shaping up to close on Thursday, so we're hoping that you'll approve this application and allow Ms. Syracusea to take over this establishment.
Okay, this is an establishment that's developed quite a following. I've been in there, so I wish you luck. Any questions from the board?
Same menu? You said that.
Yes.
I'm actually looking at your menu, I don't see, I don't see green eggs and, what was it?
Green eggs and cheese.
Green eggs and cheese.
We have it.
Okay, it's not called, I like it because it's called green eggs and cheese.
Okay, this isn't a public hearing, but I'll take testimony from any members of the public who wish to comment on this transfer, transfer of license. Mr. Walters?
First of all, I represent the seller, but that's not why I'm here.
You're also, your business is around the corner.
Right, I'm a regular at that place, and I will tell you that this new owner has already charmed me, and all the people in my office, and things, I've seen her in action, and things are seeming to be exactly the way they've been, and I'm just wanting to say how I'm happy, because I've gotten to know the owner by my client and my friend, I know he's happy, and I'm also happy as to who has been taken over, and just wanted that to be said.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Let me read the motion. I'll move that we approve the application of Brothers &amp; Sisters Company LLC doing business as Cuckoo's Cafe. Jamie Syracusea, manager sole member for a common vituums license with a entertainment radio, with, common vituums with entertainment radio, Seven Station Street, proposed seating, and I'm told that there's a typo in our calendar, it says 12, the license is for seven inside, four outside, proposed hours of operation are Monday to Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00, Saturday 8:00 AM to 5:00, and Sunday 9:00 AM to 4:00. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And we have a change of lodging house agent, and this is a question of approving the application of Bruce Miller and Frank Huff for a change of lodging house agent at 89 Marion Street, naming Darvin Aviles.
Hi, how you doing?
Okay.
My name is Darvin Aviles, and I'm the manager of the property of 89 Marion Street in Brookline, owners Frank Huff and Bruce Miller.
Okay. This, the paperwork looks in order?
It appears in order, and the police department sees no reason to reject the application.
Okay. This isn't a public hearing, but if there's any members of the public who wish to speak for this license, for or against, now is your time, and I don't see anybody, any, any questions from the board? There, I don't see any questions from the board. So, I will move that we approve the application of Bruce Miller and Frank Huff for a change of lodging house agent at 89 Marion Street, naming Darvin Aviles. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select Person Heller?
Aye.
Select Person Green?
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Sorry to keep you waiting. Okay. And I presume you are Nicole Thomas? Okay, so I will start with the same apology for, that I gave Mr. Aviles.
I'm sorry, I, could I just say one thing?
Sure.
The recommendation from Dr. Jett is that the proposed agents attend the next available lodging house training workshop scheduled for January 31st, Thursday, 11 o'clock. So I just want to make sure that Mr. Aviles is aware of that, and maybe we should amend our vote just to include that, and obviously with...
I'm sorry, I cannot hear what you said.
Dr. Jett, the, our Director of Public Health, has recommended that you attend the next available lodging house training workshop on Thursday, this Thursday, the 31st?
Yeah.
At 11:00 AM at the Health Department?
Can you make it?
Yeah, there's no problem.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is amend the vote, make the vote conditioned on that. Is that okay? Okay.
So I guess he should inform us of his attendance so that we...
Right, and so after you attend, stop by the Select Board's office...
So that would be next Saturday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, 11 at the Health Department.
And that would apply, and I assume that's Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, that would apply to you.
So let me amend the vote, the prior vote that we took to add condition to attend the lodging house training workshop, January 31st, 11, at the Health Department. All those in favor of that amended motion, Select Person Franco?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So you can guess what your motion is going to be, assuming, assuming you get past the public comment.
Of the hordes of people who are in...
So why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what, wait.
I'm Nicole Thomas. I'm the overnight and keeper Samuel Sewell Inn.
Beautiful property.
Thank you.
Okay, the paperwork appears in order, and with the same note from the Health Department. Police Department sees no reason not to, no reason to reject the application, so since they don't see any reason to reject it, I don't see any reason to reject it. And as I said, this is a, not a public hearing, but if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, now is your time.
Don't worry about it.
So all those in favor of the motion to approve the application of the Samuel Sewell Inn for change of lodging house agent on 143 St. Paul Street, naming Nicole Thomas, please say aye. Select Person Franco?
Aye.
Select Person Heller?
Aye.
Select Person Green?
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton?
Aye.
But, and the motion has that condition. And Chair votes aye. Thank you, good luck.
And that is where the...
Health Department is right across the parking lot from Town Hall.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay.
11:00 AM on Thursday morning.
11:00 AM on Thursday.
Right, okay. Yeah, when you, when you, when you go out the front door of Town Hall, you'll see the Health Department to your left. Okay, thank you. So we have an item on the Oak Street Properties deed, and I will announce that in executive session, the Select Board voted to approve the tran, to approve the signing of the deed, the dwelling leases, and the, and authorization of Town Council to sign on behalf of this board. Okay, so last item on the agenda is the question of approving the Select Board's 2020 budget objectives, and we received just before we came in, a track changes version. And I overheard Select Board Member Heller commenting on the language, I guess it's for the...
Environmental planning.
Right, environmental planning.
Is that fixed?
Select Person Green had suggested that we make sure that that goal would include other technologies that might come up, including hydrogen vehicles. I think we should also make sure that it's clear that we're looking for fossil fuel-free, oh, he's a tongue twister, vehicles, you know, whatever kind of fuel there are. So we requested that, just include those, so it would read to establish a goal for the town to pursue fossil fuel-free, alternative fuel and advanced technology vehicles. A little wordy, but...
You never know what the future brings.
You know.
And, and the other thing is, you know, because the town is so, or many leaders in the town are so focused on fossil fuel-free, making that explicit was a way of, just making sure no one has any misconceptions about what we're doing here.
Okay. Any other changes?
You had requested to add some language about zoning law?
I see that here?
Yep.
That's 35, the new 35, to update the zoning laws?
Yep.
Zoning bylaws?
All the changes requested were put in, so...
Okay, so are we ready?
So 35 on yours is to continue to monitor and implement medical and recreational marijuana?
No, it's the track changes version that Justin handed out as we were walking in.
Too much paper on my desk.
Which reflected, changes submitted, submitted to him earlier this evening.
Got it, got it.
Okay, any other, are we ready to vote? So I'll move the 2000, fiscal year 2020 objectives in no particular order, as amended tonight. All those in favor, please say aye. Select Person Franco?
Aye.
Select Person Heller?
Aye.
Select Person Green?
Aye.
Select Person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And I think that concludes our business for tonight. Great.